All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Crestwood School District Board of Education, our regular board meeting, which is dated for Monday, February 8th, 2021. I call this meeting to order at 8:43. And I'm going to request that Madam Secretary, please take role.
Mrs. Berry?
Here.
The layout?
Here.
Ms. Fawaz?
Here.
Mr. Garcia?
I, here.
Myself, Ms. Kaminsky?
Here.
And Mr. Sabo?
Here.
Mr. Chair of Quorum?
Thank you. And at this time, I will ask that we all will recognize the Pledge of Allegiance. And then from there, I will ask that our Board Secretary, please read the consent agenda and recommended action.
So, approval of agenda, February 8th, 2021, Board of Education agenda, approval of minutes. Study session, January 25th, 2021. Regular meeting, January 25th, 2021. Approval of check register list, check register dated January 1st through January 31st, 2021. Board of Education approval is recommended for the action, for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include February 8th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, January 25th, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, January 25th, 2021, and the registry dated January 1st through January 31st, 2021.
Support?
And we have support for Mrs. Berry, that the Board of Education approval is recommended for the action items listed on the consent agenda, which include the February 8th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, January 25th, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, January 25th, 2021, and the check registry dated January 1st through January 31st of 2021. Do we have support?
Support.
Mrs. Berry, or, yes, Mrs. Berry with support. All those in favor signify by standing aye?
Aye.
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 And any nay?
Nay.
Okay, and for the record, I believe, Mrs. Fawaz, so Madam Secretary, if you will, put a nay in for Mrs. Fawaz. Okay. All right. And at this time, what I'm going to do is turn the meeting over to our business manager, Mrs. Morgan.
Thank you. I'm actually going to go through them, and I'm going to move to number three first, because we have individuals from Train on the line with us that I would like to, they've been on the line since 7 o'clock with us, so they sat through everything, so I want to move them up a little bit.
Thank you.
The award energy, we would like to award the energy project to Train. The Crestwood School District recently published a request for proposal for an energy conservation project. The project would involve replacing lights, plumbing, univents, and other miscellaneous energy-saving items. The project will be financed over the next 20 years. The upgrade should reduce energy costs by approximately $100,000 per year, thus offsetting the increased tip of the loan payment. The RFP was posted on the state website, and the information regarding the proposal was shared with the Board.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Elzayet?
No.
No?
I'm sorry. Okay.
That was Sue.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Kaminsky, I apologize.
That's okay. I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education award the energy project to Train.
All right. And do I have support?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Berry?
I think there are some questions.
Yes, there are. There are questions, and I do want to give the Board to the opportunity to ask those. But before that, we do need to have at least the recommended action, so we can bring that to the table.
Well...
To open it up for discussion?
I would like to open it up for discussion. I just can't support until I ask some questions, if that's okay.
I believe the action was recommended, Mr. Chair. It just wasn't seconded yet.
Okay.
But you can't have discussion until we have a support.
You have a support, yeah, to have discussion for, since it's brought to the table. All right, so I'm gonna, let me just, I have, I have support, oh, I'm sorry, I have the action coming to the table from Mrs. Kaminsky. Do I have support to open this up for discussion?
I'll support it for discussion.
Okay, so, for the record, the motion will be, we have the opening for discussion. And with that, I will ask for the members, and I believe Mrs. Berry has the first question, so I'm going to give you the floor.
Um, okay, my first question is, um, I tried to go through this. What I personally would have liked to see is every building in its own section. Because this, to me, I was going back and forth, back and forth, trying to make sense of it. It was very difficult for me. And this is what I've been doing for the last two days, to be honest with you. So, that's number one for me, because it doesn't answer my questions when I go back and forth. And then I highlighted some comments about, my other concern is, if we, um, were to find things that are not in here, okay, for instance, if, let's say, um, if something like asbestos or something like that came up, for instance.
Okay.
What would happen, because it states in here that they're not responsible for that. Okay, I highlighted it. I can't remember what page it was on. What would happen in a situation like that? Is that to, try, go ahead.
Well, what I was gonna ask was, okay, so that's the first question that you have. And what I do want to make sure is that we are following the proper procedure. So with that, I'm not sure if I should address this question with Dr. Lazar, but we did have a motion to bring this forward, and I don't know if it'd be Dr. Lazar or Dr. Musalem. Can we, can we open this up without the support for discussion?
It was, it's Miss Morgan. I'm sorry, Mr. President. I think Miss Morgan is the one that's handling this, correct?
No, no, that's correct, but in regards to, no, no, that's correct, Mrs. Morgan. But in regards to the Roberts rules, I want to make sure that we're, we're following the proper procedure regarding the motion. Because right now, it was, the motion was brought forward, and usually there's a second, and then there's a discussion with it. And then, if there is no, if there, if no one is in favor of this, then of course, it would end with a vote. So now we have it where it's been brought to the table, there's no support, but we're, we have the discussion. And I just want to make sure that we don't get caught on a procedural rule.
So, my understanding, Mr. Chair, and Dr. Lazar, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that when there's a motion put on the floor, someone has to support that motion, which would then lead to discussion. Because if there's not a support, then there is no motion on the floor. Because you're not, you're supporting the motion to discuss, but you're not supporting it for a vote. And then after the discussion, you could either vote, or you could ask the table, or so on, so forth.
Okay, so...
And Mrs. Berry supportive.
Well, I support it, yeah, to discuss it. Correct.
Okay, I, I apologize then. Again, I'm, I apologize for that. Okay. With that being said, we do have questions again from Mrs. Berry. So, the first question I will then now turn over, and anything else you have, Nadia, please ask. So I would turn that over to Mrs. Morgan or to Train to answer the question, which is in regards to the issue of asbestos and a specific language in your contract regarding removals.
Mr. Chair, yes, when I go to, like, every school, at the end of it, it says, "Any asbestos identification, testing, or abatement excluded." So, my question is, what does it, what does that entail? What about if there was abatement that was needed? How would that affect us?
Okay, all right. If someone from, go ahead.
So, can I answer and then Train?
Absolutely.
And adjust in when needed. The, what you see in front of us is not the final contract, and the final contract will be coming to the Board once it's set. This is their proposal, original proposal. Mr. Jacobs and I went, sat through with them to discuss all of the details, and then there are some changes that are going to be made. That's why, when in the proposal that we're discussing, is we've given you, we've asked you to go with Train as the company prior to signing the contract. Now, according to asbestos, there are some items that we know will require some asbestos removal that we are, have gotten quotes for and are putting in the contract, and that's going to be reworked with Train prior to the entire contract being presented to the Board. So those have been adjusted at our prior meeting. That includes asbestos removal around the water heater and some piping. Is that not right, Mr. Jacobs?
That's correct, at the Highview Elementary.
Okay. Now, if there's additional asbestos removal that we are not aware of, so let's say they go into a ceiling tile and something happens, and it's in there that we're not aware of, we are still responsible for that, because it is our cost. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Nadia. I don't want to cut you off, so go ahead.
Okay, so, so what I've learned from our bond project, I've been lucky enough to be on the Finance Committee. I personally want to know if there are change orders, if there's any changes, and anything that happens, what, what, you know, what do we have to go back to, to protect the district? So there are no surprises.
Well, first of all, this isn't like a normal bond project. This is an energy project, so it is our, it is our desire to replace things and change things and do these projects. Now, if they're, before they've even given us these projects, they've gone out and gotten quotes, and Train can speak to this, and predicted what the cost would be for all of the things that they're going to change. The majority of the change should not be dealing with any asbestos removal. And so there will be an exact list of everything that's provided to us that's being changed. And if Train would like to speak to, because I know that there is some leeway in different areas, just because all budgets are built that way, and they need to be able to guarantee that the savings, we receive these savings, so I'll let them speak to that.
Okay. And with that, someone from Train?
Good evening. My name is Gwen. Some of you have met me, and I am Gwen Pettit, thank you. I also have on the line Ed Sapala and Ali Farhat. And I'm gonna let Ed take this, field this question about the asbestos.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, good evening. We've identified only two locations where asbestos is present. That's at Highview, where we're actually removing domestic hot water heater, and we're placing it in the tank. So we've identified all those locations. In all areas where we're doing work, we suspect there is no asbestos. However, you know, in construction, there's always a sense of uncertainty, but we don't suspect any.
Okay.
So from, from that aspect, if we define asbestos, we'll just bring it to the attention of the school board, and we'll just have to address it accordingly.
Okay, so, I guess my question would be, and Nadia, please help me if I'm wrong. Basically, what we would like as a Board is to make sure that change orders are following through to the administration and then going to us, so that we know what's going on. Nadia, am I correct on that?
Correct, but...
Okay. Go ahead.
You know what, let other people ask questions, and then I'll follow through, because I don't want to be hugging up the floor the whole time, so let other people...
You're perfectly fine. Okay, no problem. Are there any other members that wish to ask questions?
Yes.
Please indicate. Mrs. Janu?
So, I think for me, hi, everyone, I think for me, I, we received this, the booklet, and I, I think my, one of my biggest concerns, we received it only a week ago. So I, you know, felt like there was a little bit of a rush, which I understand now that there's a time, you know, we need, stuff that needs to be done, needs to be done in a timely manner. But I'm just concerned is, why did it take so long to receive the plan? For us to be able to go through it and look over what, you know, the work, the scope of work and all of that?
Well, I believe that, that we've all been receiving some, you know, the updates and so on, of course, not the book. But I know that we've been receiving the updates, but I'll let, I'll defer that question in regards to the timeliness over to administration.
So, a couple things. We've had a couple meetings with Train prior to the proposal going out. So the, the energy proposal did go out, it went out to bid for all of the districts. We received the book on Tuesday, I believe it was, the 26th, and you received that book that Friday. So you've got the book the same time that we did, basically, two days later. As in the timeframe, in order to make sure that all the projects are complete by August 30th, that's where we're putting with the contracts and pushing. Again, this is just because we've selected Train as the provider, and so this is not the actual final contract, it's not the actual final list of work. It was their proposal to us.
Right, I know. So I'm just asking Train, what, why we received the book at that, you know, on that date. I mean, I'm just, just from the timeline, from the timeframe of when they came out and did the scope of work. And I know we had, I received the email, but like, when the, you know, them going, getting the bills from us and all of that stuff is, why, like, what took so long to receive the book? For us as a Board to be able to go through the scope of work and everything that needed to be done? I know that, obviously, I understand it's not the final list of...
Right. And legally, the process with the RFP, they can't provide us the scope of work until the bid documents are accepted. So until the scope of work, until the bid is closed and all the bid documents are accepted, which has to be a sealed bid, and it was at 1 o'clock, and I don't remember the date, I want to say it was Tuesday, the 26th, but I can't remember the date off the top of my head. We can't legally give it out to anyone, and we can't legally get it prior to that time and date. Because there is the opportunity for other energy companies to prepare a bid on it as well. So legally, they couldn't prepare to us sooner.
Okay, so then going from that, Penny, if, Morgan, if, if companies did not, if we knew that Train was the only company that was putting a bid in, so, I mean, I understand the legalities of it. I mean, if a company didn't attend the mandatory meeting, the pre-mandatory meeting, then we knew that they weren't going to be putting a bid in, right?
They could still submit a bid. It just, we didn't have to accept it. Just because they didn't attend the mandatory meeting, they could have still put in a bid. It's just, we could not have accepted it. We could have said, "You did not attend the mandatory meeting, and therefore we don't accept it." However, we cannot accept their bid prior to that deadline.
So we couldn't receive the book from the scope of work until the 26th?
Till the deadline of the 26th, correct, yes, because it has to be a sealed bid with no one seeing any of the information prior to.
Hi, this is Gwen. Let me just, let me just add to, so, because I see what you're saying there. Yeah. And I know, we've been working with the committee, the facility committee, throughout this process, and with as far as scope of work, and kind of building this scope of work up to that point. And as Penny said, you know, there's legalities that we have to follow based on, you know, the RFP being released, the mandatory bidding, things like that. So we worked up that scope back and forth, up until basically the RFP went out, you know, when it was comfortable going out, based on the investigations we had with the district, the conversations we had with the administration, and also, you know, our recommendations. So, prior to that, I mean, we've, we've been on site, for sure, and we've been working with Scott and Penny and a lot of the building engineers along the way to build this scope, to exactly have it the way you guys, what you wanted to see in it. And when the RFP goes out, that's when, you know, that's kind of like the final cutout date, when we're comfortable putting our bid together. And so, you know, per legalities, you have that two-week window that we provide it to you, or you put the RFP out, and then, you know, we have the two weeks to respond. So it's all, it's all Michigan legalities. So as soon as the RFP is, is in, that's when you got it. Now, based on the scope of work, we set that with Scott and Penny and the building administrations prior, way prior to that, you know, as far as give and take. What do you want to see in this bid? You know, what are the things that you want done? Do you want to try to address a chiller, or no, you know, that kind of thing? So we built that all based on conversations and meetings that we had with the committee, as well as Scott. If that answers your question.
Okay.
Okay.
So what is in here, you guys are saying is not what is going to necessarily be done, like, it could...
So what we typically do is we give you our best foot forward, you know, and if things come up awry, from here, when you approve, when you approve a vendor from this process, you vote to work with that vendor. Then we dig deep with not only the district, as far as just getting every line item. You'll see, what you don't see in that proposal, which is on the flash drive, is line by line, like, lighting, line by line building, you know. So it's on the flash drive that you receive. It's not, because if we put it in there, it would be much thicker than the one you got. So, but it is on the flash drive that you, that you received.
So who has the flash drive?
Penny does.
Flash drive, okay.
So, but, you know, yeah, so it's just something, that's how typical, like, typically the way these things go. But when we get to the contract phase, you know, you approve, if you approve us to go forward with, working with us, then we go, you know, we sit down and we go not only line by line with the scope of work, based on what's already in there. And we've kind of done that the last week, too. We've been tweaking it left and right, you know, based on maybe some new finds that Scott said he wanted to add. And we add those things in there, as well as we work with Trune, your lawyers, with just the contract language back and forth. So the next time you see us, if you vote today, the next time you see us, everything will be ironed out, contract-wise, where everybody's comfortable, as well as the legalities with the legislature and all that, you know, the bond, those types of things, the financing and things like that. So that's, today is our best foot forward. If something arises, let's say, you know, a boiler goes out in the next 24 hours, and you say, "Hey, we want to put that in there," then, you know, we can, we can make those adjustments now.
Okay.
A majority of the, and Scott can had us speak to this, you know, majority, we've been working back and forth for the last two weeks, just to get ready for that process.
Okay, so there's not like, I guess, part of my concern is like, with, like, my husband's a pipe fitter. So like, let's just say, changes, unit, you know, and I just want to make sure we're not just kind of doing half the work, or we, is, so what's included in there is not, like, we're not going to turn around and, you know, find that, well, this part wasn't technically included in your, in our scope of work, and it ends up costing us. You know, I'm just wanting to make...
Yeah, so, if you think about, you know, I know the asbestos, the asbestos problems or question is always on your minds, right, because we know our schools are riddled with asbestos, if you haven't taken care of it.
It was included.
It's just each thing, so it was like... Yes. Well, typically, you know, if you've had an asbestos report done, which most schools have, you know where your asbestos is, if we're going to touch it or not. If there's lighting to be replaced, and we're going to drop a ceiling, and we check in there, and we know that we're going to get in there, we're going to find asbestos, obviously, we know we have to take care of that, or you have to take care of that. Like the boiler, for instance, we know there's asbestos in that boiler, and so we're going to handle that, because we know upfront, we're going to handle that.
But that's not, that's not what this says. This is saying, at the end of each thing, that you guys are not handling any type of asbestos or abatement, so...
Kat, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I can. No, I understand your concern, and we, when we collaborated further in detail with Scott and his staff, we did discover that it is there, so we do need to address it. So we'll, we'll make sure, we'll make those changes in our contract, in the school district. You know, I guess I misspoke earlier. We did identify asbestos also at the, at the high school, in the boiler room, and then also in the facility garage area, which we are doing work, and we're including that as part of our scope.
Is it changing the number at all, as to what's included, as a number as a whole?
No, the asbestos that we're looking at specifically, like at the high school, it's, we can easily identify it, and it's, and it's, it's not something where we can actually see and identify. It's not something unknown.
All right, so is it changing, are our numbers going to change based, like, are you going to add an extra cost to that?
No, no, we're not.
We've worked with Scott and Penny the last couple weeks over that issue.
Okay.
So we've, we've, I know it says what it says in there, and we have addressed that with both of them. The last...
My concern then is bringing this, and it's not like, as it, like, if the plan is not, like, this is what I looked at, right? So this is the book I looked at. This is the book that you say you're doing, and then now you're saying... So I kind of, I think I would have just liked to have seen maybe those amendments prior, that, you know, a little more comfortable, to say, "We're not doing asbestos." Literally, at the end of each thing, to say, "We're not handling asbestos," you know, "No asbestos will be handled," you know. And then now you're saying you are, which makes me more comfortable. Definitely glad to hear that that'll be taken care of, just...
So remember, today is just a vote to go with a contractor, right? And then, you know, we're going to dig, we're going to continue to dig and get this all set in stone. And then you will vote again to sign the contract, so at that point.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mrs. Berry, if I could, Mrs. Kaminsky had asked a question, and I want to make sure she has her opportunity. I will call on you next, Mrs. Berry. Mrs. Kaminsky?
Yeah, thanks, Ed. So my question, Gwen, is, and I want to just reiterate, we are just now voting to go with Train, however, that does not give you carte blanche. Each contract for each specific job that's going to be performed will be presented to the Board, and we will vote on it as it's presented. Is that correct?
So you're going to have only one contract. That's the thing with us, is you get one contract. We hold, we hold all the guarantees for all the different things that, you know, you're doing to the district. So you will vote again. You'll be able to see line by line with Scott, you'll be able to see that. And you'll vote on one, it's one contract. So we're, remember, this project is a guaranteed project, so, and it's also guaranteed, you know, it's one throat to choke. So we hold, if you're not happy with something that happens, you come to us, straight to us. There isn't going to other contractors. It's straight to us. As well as, when we say that, you know, you're going to save specific energy dollars, like what we have stated in there, that's not going to change, based on the scope we have. So if we're guaranteeing your dollar amount, if we don't hit that dollar amount, we pay you the difference. So that's one of the legislative, legislative rules, I guess I should say, for this type of project.
And I think that the concern here is, if I could, Mr. Garcia, is that we, as a Board, did not have as much transparency with some of the bond things that happened, so we're a little skittish. And the concern is, if you, one of the projects, that you didn't anticipate, for example, asbestos, and you thought it would be clear, and you go in there, and they've started to do the job, and then you stop and say, "Oops, there's asbestos, it's going to cost $150,000 to clear out," then we kind of are in a spot where we really have to pay that money, whether we have it or not, because the job's already started. And I think that's where lies the concern.
No, I under, I totally understand your concern, for sure. Maybe we can talk to, you know, one of the biggest part of this project is going to be a lighting. Ali, do you want to speak to that lighting? Because a lot of times, you know, you have lighting in the, or you have asbestos in the floor, you have it around your boilers, and you have it in the lighting. And maybe we can address some of the lighting in, I think Ali's...
I'm here.
There he is, okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm adding here to the all what has been said about asbestos. Pretty much, our scope work, or I would say, most of our scope work... or I would say most of our scope work was designed to avoid having to deal with asbestos other than the boiler at Highview and some mechanical room work at the high school where we have, we have to address the asbestos. And then again, in principle, our company policy is not to deal with asbestos directly. And that's why we by default exclude that, but then if the customer doesn't want to deal that, deal with it on their own, they want to, they want to be part of the project, we can deal with it. And that's what we've worked back and forth with Scott and Penny. Ultimately, the final contract that's going to be presented to you at the later stage is where all the fine print for the, the scope of work, pricing is not going to change, but as long as the entire scope work is being, we're doing, and if we remove scope work per your request, the price changes accordingly. But all the contract that, that comes at the later stage is where all the details, and you have enough time to review that. And it's broken out, the contract will be broken out, a legal part, scope of work part, energy part, et cetera. So it's easier to kind of for certain, like, board members to focus on, for example, the legal part or the scope work part or the energy part. So that's, that's next. The, the proposal is pretty much all what we proposed for you to do. The contract is what you have selected, what, whatever adjustments you have made or requested for us to make at the end. And then the contract is what kind of governs the relationship between train and this school district.
Okay. All right. Are there any other members that have questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Berry.
Oh, did Mo want to talk? I'm sorry, is that what you're telling me? I'm sorry, go ahead, Mo.
No, after you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Ms., I'm sorry, Gwen, you said something about the savings and guaranteeing us a refund and such. Can you tell me what you base that on? Like, what, what, what is it that you're basing it on so we understand where we're getting the savings and how we're getting the savings? You're, you're muted.
All right. I'm going to let Ollie take that. He's the energy engineer that puts all those calculations together, so I'll let him explain that to you.
All right.
He's muted.
No, I'm not. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was muted. The savings are like. In the proposal, then at some point in an annual, once the, once the contract is in place, the work has been completed. There's a process during the contract and to develop those, the, the, the way to measure and calculate those savings to verify the savings. We've developed with the district a process, an engineering process, that's typical for energy projects. We.
Did we lose him?
Of the scope of work, how we're going to measure those savings, how we're going to calculate them, how we're going to verify them. And that's during the construction, okay? Once, once the construction is done with all these measures in place, measuring before and after, before the project starts and after the project is finished, and there's an annual assessment that happens and report generated to the district that shows the difference annual savings.
So you're saying that you haven't done any assessments yet? Is that what you're telling me? You're like, you haven't compared any utility bills? You haven't looked at anything from the district?
Oh, no, we've done all that.
Okay. What, what, what was it based on? Which?
So, so we look, and maybe I'll, I'll let Ollie explain this in a second, but we look at the utility bills and we look at the square footage of your building. That's the first qualification, if you remember, when we came to the board the first time, to even see if there was a project. That's how we started. We start going, you know, combing the utility bills that we typically look for, you know, from one to three years base now. And I will address the fact that, you know, kids have not been in school for the last year, so that's not a good baseline. There's no point using it because we don't have a good baseline at that point. So we come up with a baseline and then at the end of the project, once we make the improvement, so let's say we do LED lighting or we do low flush toilets, there's a dollar or there's a, there's a calculation on each one of those. And that's in your, that's in your book, under the measure and verification piece of that. So it explains how we calculate each piece of that. And maybe, you know, Ollie, why don't you talk to like, the, you know, what we look for, the calculations? How do you do the calculations for lighting?
So. Real quick, before you, maybe he can answer this too. You said we're not going to base it on this year because the kids aren't there. What years will we be basing it on? Because I know we had, oh God, what did they, the vortex, we had that a couple of years ago. So we know that that's going to be high. If you compared it on that, I still don't think that that would be a fair evaluation.
So we giving, we give.
Back, sorry. I'll, I'll handle this part.
Okay.
Energy, your energy goes up or down with weather. Your energy cost goes up or down with weather, okay? And that gets the, that baseline or the energy savings or the calculation gets adjusted with weather. If you have a, if you have, let's say you operate as is right now, your, your cost, I'm just using kind of even numbers. Right now you use $500,000 in energy. On a good year, when the weather is mild, the year that's going to be crazy, you're going to use 600,000. However, let's put that same scenario after the project. After the project, you will be saving, you'll be using 400,000 on a, on a mild year because you're saving that 100,000 with the project. However, on a crazy year, you'll be using 500 instead of the 600. You're still saving the same amount. The delta is what your savings, not the act, what you're paying. The delta is your savings. If it was a crazy year, you still have not implemented, the project will be 600,000 versus 500,000 with, after the project. So it's pretty much, it's a wash. So weather does not affect the savings. The savings that the delta is a, what, what would you have paid versus what you're paying?
And let me, let me just add there that we do, we do add as part of our calculations, a 3% utility escalation also. So that's already built in. That's, that's common practice for any of these projects, projects is a three, it doesn't matter what company you go for, that's pretty much, any engineer knows that you build that in. So we have the up and down. Some years, you know, it may be, your inner, energy may increase and some years it may come down. So we built that delta in there is what he's referring to, as, as well as the 3% escalation in utility bills per year. And that's, that, you can see that in the performa, you know, in the money piece of that, if you look on that performa, you'll see that built in, it identifies that. So I know that book is a lot, a lot to look at. And that's why we like to go, you know, with the committee, with Penny and Scott, we did, you know, try to go section by section and kind of go through that already. But I, you know, it's, it's a lot to understand as well as the legalities of each, each piece of that. And I just want to assure you that, you know, we have, we have worked with Trune on all of our projects that we've done, who is your, you know, your legal, your lawyers for the district. And this is a guaranteed project. We can only do, the, the project size is based on the energy savings that we found, okay? So just keep that in mind. It's not like your standard plan and, plan and spec job where you got the money, we're going to spend the money. This is, we have to make sure that the savings are there from the utility, that we, the upgrades that we do can be supported by the savings. So keep that in mind, this is not your standard project.
Mr. Chair, oh, all right. With, with that being said, I believe a couple of comments here. First, let me go to Mr. Sabah, who I, I believe has been waiting.
Yeah, just two quick points. First and foremost, Penny, I'm not sure what the bid process looked like because I think it was way ahead of my time. But from what I'm hearing, we only had one bid. Is that correct?
We only had one company submitted proposal, correct.
Okay. How, and have we communicated with anybody else?
We sent out emails. What happened is, is that the bid goes out onto the state website, which is mandated by the state of Michigan through the Michigan Department of Education. It goes on the state website and from that, that was sent out via email to 76 different companies.
What was the timeframe of response expected?
The timeframe of response was two weeks, but there were no questions, there were no emails, there were no one that addressed anything to me requesting any of that.
And when was that sent out again, please? I'm sorry.
I don't have it in front of me, but I know that it was sent out, it was requested back on January 26th, so approximately two weeks prior, so right after we got back from Christmas vacation, which was probably January 8th-ish, but I don't have the actual bid in front of me.
So I've been hearing about train since before I started joining meetings in December. And am I correct in saying so?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were the only ones to put a bid in in January. And this was opened up in January. So was there predetermination to deal with train prior to this? And not anybody else?
It was not predetermined, but they did work with us to go through and do an audit of what we had deficiencies in.
That's prior to the January initial. Okay. Did we work with anyone else?
No.
Okay. So that creates a problem for me, okay? I'm just speaking freely here. So I, and I'm not saying I'm for or against this. And I, and I know this is a curve ball to many of you, but I'm sorry, I'm just listening to this. For me to vote on this, which tells me I can only deal with train, and then to say, you're going to vote on the contract next, pretty much hangs. And that's the way I look at this, okay? The other thing is, and I know, Mr. Jacobs, you've got a lot on your plate already, so it's not fair for me to say to you, you know, it would have been great to get an assessment on this, this booklet, from maybe your perspective, because honestly, we're, we're relying on you, right? Your professionalism and, and your experience are what are going to guide us here. This is a big investment. And I understand the savings, Gwen, I'm, I'm not disputing any of the information in this. I, I, you know, the contractual piece is an issue for me. And the fact that, as Ms. Janun and Ms. Berry have noted, there's a lot of information here and we're not technical people, mechanically technical people. I can look at the numbers and dissect them myself, that's not the issue. But I need your input, Mr. Jacobs, on, on why this? Why now? Why train?
All right.
Uh, Mr. Sabah. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ed.
What I could, what I can do is I can call for Mr. Jacobs.
He's on the call.
And give you, yep. All right, and give you an opportunity to respond.
All right, Mr. Sabah, when train, when train came in, they, they were introduced to the district as, as a potential person that could do, do these energy audits and, and work for us. They, they spent an awful lot of time in our facilities, going through our facilities with microscopes, darn near looking at every avenue and facet that I had put on their radar. Over, over the course of the time, Ed, Ollie and myself have been working diligently going through these items. Back on the fourth, when I was handed this book myself, I spent a lot of time because I had a lot of, lot of issues dealing with OCH and Plant Moran from the bond. So with that bitterness, that bitterness that I had with that situation, I was very, very diligent with going line by line on this. I too had a lot of confusion going back and forth in sections because they provided, they provided a generalized document to the district with you guys, that book that you guys had before you. Unfortunately, there's a lot of line by line items that they didn't include there. Today, for example, when I, when we met on the fourth, train and myself and Mrs. Morgan, we, I had a list of 10 things right off the rip that I found that was not in the scope of work, that I thought wasn't going to be addressed. And I was worried that it was going to be an add-on to the project. So we addressed those and as of today at 2:45, we ironed out all 10 of those issues. I was told that there was enough issue, enough, enough wiggle room in some of the things that we've already done as a district. For example, there was a bunch of emergency lighting in the buildings and emergency exit lighting that when they came in, we were in 75%, 80% deficient. Well, being that I wanted to have the kid, the, the school safe in the event the kids came back sooner than train started, I initiated that preventive maintenance. 95%, 98% of it had been replaced. So these type of things will be like, you know, will be a, a credit. However, what I found out today, this flash drive, they do have, they do have a lot of line by line things that I couldn't recognize. And my, like I said, and I, and I've reiterated over and over again, my concern is, is that I'm trying to alleviate mitigating any charging, however, without, and, and I don't, and, and in layman's terms, there are things that people just can't physically see. However, that I have noticed, I have noticed an awful big change with train in comparison with OCH, Plant Moran and partners. They seem to be much more diligent with some of these items. And now that I'm seeing some line by lines, because I had a lot of questions about the LED flat panels that they were putting in in our schools. When I start going by the line by line just for the school, it's showing some very good detail that I can really dissect this information and, and probably intersect a lot of the, the issue. I am very, very much in favor of this project only because there are many things that were not addressed during the bond. And unfortunately, these are things that are going to cost us money just to make right anyway. So in my, in my eyes, it's also taking a lot of things off my plate so I can focus on other things like our playgrounds and other, other issues that had been neglected for many, many years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Are there any other, Madam, or Mrs. Berry?
Um, I just wanted to ask, Mr. Jacobs, when you say it would take a lot off your plate, what, what is it that it would take off? Are you talking about electronics? What is it? I'm talking about light fixtures that use three times the amount of energy than our new ones that we had installed during the bond. I'm talking about these heaters, univent heaters at the high school, Highview, Kinlock, that were not addressed through the bond, that are original equipment. These type of things are problematic as of today, some of those, some of those very units. Those units, if we take those off the radar and unfortunately, unfortunately during the bond, we had down about 80, 85% of it. If we were to take that off the radar now, we can mitigate a lot of added expenses for our HVAC during the year. Not to mention, we'll be saving more money per building that we could put back into the schools. So with that being said, I'm, I'm sorry, I just wanted to go back to what Ms. Morgan said. She said that some of the stuff has not been amended and is not in this booklet. I agree, this is something that we definitely need because it's not going to cost the public anything. I agree that it's going, you know, like you said, it's going to take time, your, your valuable time that you can dedicate to other things. My only thing is, contractually, like Mr. Sabah said, is I would like to see the booklet with everything before I have to make a decision like that. Again, yes, my experience has been horrible with this bond and I don't want the public to come after us again. So I want to do everything that I can do to make sure that we're doing this correctly. That's just my take on that. Thank you.
Okay. So then I'll, let me take the floor here. So then a couple of questions would be number one. A good question to ask is the funding, this is a regulated, and this is for Gwen, if you're there, I don't know if she's.
I'm there.
The funding for this is regulated by who?
The, the funding is, is regulated both by the Michigan Legislature as well as, as well as us. We have to prove that we are saving exactly what we said to the state.
Okay. Okay. And also members of the board and then of course, the general public. So this was information that was brought to us, I believe, at Riverside Middle School when Train had spoken to us in regards to moving forward and providing the assessment, I think is the proper word to use, to us, so that we could figure out where it is that we stand and where it is that we need to be moving forward. With that, I believe that there's a lot of questions in regards to the contract, which is fine. I'm, I'm not, I can't sway anyone one way or the other. I just want to make sure that all of the members feel confident when they decide how they're going to. decide how they're going to uh vote for this project, um, and moving forward. So with that, I do have a question in regards to the timeliness of Penny. If we decide to give the members of the board some additional time and for uh them to receive any other um information that they may need, when do, could we bring this back to the table in a study session next week? Um, a, a, and vote on it then? Can we, can we table it till the next board meeting? Uh, I wanna make sure that we are not put in a position where we uh don't vote on, or, or vote on this and we don't do an act, something accurately.
Well, there's two folds of it, and obviously, the, the longer that we put it off, and that's not a problem, it, the longer it'll take to get the items completed. That's, putting it off is not a problem. Um, however. It's really going to be up to Train if they choose to then, if we put it off and not award the RFP to the company. On whether or not they want to develop the contract prior to being awarded the company. So without the contract that we take to the board with the line to line, exactly the way we want it. And now again, you, we can take the contract to the board after you approve the company, and you can deny the contract if that's what you choose to do as well. All we're doing today, and all we're recommending today, is that we move forward with Train. We're not guaranteeing them any mon, money, we're not guaranteeing them any funds. But yes, we can delay the signing, uh, the approval of the contract, as long as the board is, until they're happy.
Yes, but that part of it I understand, and I, I, I know that uh, uh, I'm familiar with the bid process and how that went out, and I, and I, I know the fact that, you know, only so many people had uh submitted, and Train was the one. Um, all right, let me get a consensus of the board, wait, um.
Mr. Chair?
Is it, what would, what would be the pleasure of the board at this time? And I believe that, Mr. Sabo, you had a question?
I think Mr. Jacobs had his hand up, but you can't see it, so I wanted to make sure he was addressed.
Thanks, thank you, thank you, Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I, Gwen, Ali and Ed, I think, I think what would be a big help. Um, and, and, and uh President Garcia had touched upon this a little bit. The line by line that uh Ed and Ali provided me today. Oh, that seems like a lot of information, that could be, it could be beneficial, so they know exactly what's getting done for building. Um, it's, it was, I believe, and I, and it took me a little bit, and I've navigated that in the, in that book. Um, and luckily, I have, I have some knowledge of a lot of that things, a, a lot of the issues in there. However, if they're able to see line by line, like you guys gave me today for the high school, for like example, the lighting. They can say, okay, cool, is, everything is being taken care of for the high school. And that way, I think they would have a little bit more assurance that, that, you know, everything, our due, our due diligence, both myself and you guys are being executed. And like I said, our challenge is, is to convince them and entrust us with this, this, this project. Because of the bitterness that our bond had created. And, and, and it's still going on. However, I, I think, I think with time and, and knowledge. Uh, I think we can, we can get a lot, a lot of additional support. I just think we need to provide more information as if nobody knew anything.
Mr. President?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Jacobs, for making that comment. And before I call on you, Mrs. Elzayet, well, which I will, and, and I think Nadia had mentioned it. Uh, yes, there, there is some concerns in regards to um having so many uh hands on the pie, I guess, or in the cookie jar, or whatever the case may be. And I, I see the board is just making sure that um you know, things are done, that things are done appropriately, and that we have uh something that's black and white, where, you know, we're a little apprehensive. Or some are a little apprehensive moving forward, uh, considering where we were. So, thank you for saying that, Mr. Jacobs. And then from there, I will say, uh, Mrs. Elzayet.
So I just wanted to say that it, it seems like we're leaning towards tabling this. And before we do that, I, I just want maybe some more clear lines of what date can we get the document that Scott is talking about? Let's provide a date where questions will be turned back to our superintendent and our business manager. And then we won't, um, you know, end up in this again, where we're, we feel like we didn't have time to review, and we have questions. We need answers to. We'd be giving Train and Penny an opportunity to work through the answers for us prior to meeting.
What I will, what I will ask is this, uh, Penny did uh provide uh the phone call, and then of course, I sent out the information if there were questions and answers. Um, what I will ask is, Penny, if you could, um, get all of the supporting documentation that can be sent out in the Friday up, update. From there.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I, can't we always, can't we call a special meeting, maybe even before Friday, if this is something?
Well, I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to get to that, because there, we need to make sure that we have a process in place, so that no one is left behind, and we don't move over something that we don't need to do. So if we can get the information uh from administration to the board. If you have an opportunity looking at it over the weekend, we can schedule a meeting next week. Monday, Tuesday, whatever you'd like to do, we'll schedule that meeting. Uh, but that would give you two and a half, two days, let's just say the weekend, uh, Friday, Friday night, Saturday, Sunday. To review what it is, bring all of those questions forward, or email Penny over the weekend. Uh, and then she can bring all the questions over to a, a, a study session. Uh, I, I think that would be fair enough for all parties involved, and that gives the board of, uh, an opportunity to ask questions.
Mr. Chair?
At that one time. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Sabo, yes. I just wanna address something Scott said. Scott, I have a clear slate, a clean slate with the bond. I have no, you know, no reservations. I fully trust you, and I fully trust Train's reputation as an industry leader, so I don't want that to come out as a mistrust of, of your capabilities, Penny's capabilities, or Train's. There is no mistrust whatsoever. This is an obligation for us as trustees to ensure that the citizens in the community have all the rocks unturned. We need to make sure everything is the way it's supposed to be. So please, Gwen, uh, Ed and Ali, understand that, you know, we, we are, it's, it's no distrust towards you, or you're, you're sparkling company. I know the history, it's beautiful, it's great. But please understand that we need to make sure, I just wanted to address what, what Scott said, that there's um you know, we need, we need our due diligence done, that's all.
Mr. Chair?
So with that.
Gwen has her hand up.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Kaminsky.
Um, yeah, just a few things for Train to know. Um, we obviously have had a turnover on the board. Um, also, there was a presentation done to one of the committees last year on this. And unfortunately, Kellin Krzanek and myself, and I don't remember the third person that heard some of the presentation. On that, it might have been Mrs. Antonik, um, who, rest your soul, is no longer with us. So, some of this, I know you're probably feeling you presented this information, but because of the changes we've undergone. I would like to amend my motion to table this for a study session. Or actually to table it for a special meeting. Um, and I'd like to remind the board that because of midwinter break, we are closed next Monday and Tuesday. So I don't want it to go too long. Possibly, we could squeeze on a meeting Thursday of this week. So that we could have a special meeting next Wednesday to actually vote on it.
All right, well, with that then, uh, we do have an amendment to the approval of the, of, of moving the Train project forward, uh, which is to table this project until Thursday. Uh, uh, and Sue, please correct me if I'm wrong, table this project until Thursday, when we can have a special meeting? And then.
Can I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, if we, if we had that special meeting and everything is included as what is being said. Um, and we're content, uh, would, we would be able to vote on it that day, correct?
In that meeting, as long as we post it within the time period, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Mr. President?
And, uh, Mrs. Elzayet.
I, I, I just wanna, I don't mean to harp on it, but let's get a date, questions should be submitted. That way Penny, Scott, Train all have an opportunity to get the answers that we need.
Yes, no, I agree, but that will depend on how quickly uh administration can turn around the information that we will need.
Got it.
Today's Monday, uh, today's Monday, if, if Gwen is, is Wednesday. Uh, or even tomorrow morning, or can, can that information be provided to the board via email, so they have an opportunity to get it? Then we can have a special meeting this week, Thursday, Penny?
We, I can, I can certainly get that. I don't know if it's gonna email over, um, if not, we can.
I'm gonna do a test email tonight to see if the information on the jump drive, the flash drive, will email in whole, because it is a huge document. Um, so I will do a test email tonight, and then if it is able to email directly, then I will, um, get that out tonight. If it's not, then I will actually have to get a hard copy printed.
In order to make this work, yeah, in order to make this work, it's probably not gonna go via email. You're most likely gonna have to download it as a PDF copy onto Google Drive, and then share that folder with everyone.
I can do that, okay.
Mr. Chair, would it be horrible of me to ask for a hard copy, because I like tangibles to, to highlight and stuff, if you don't mind?
Okay, then what I will ask then is, Penny, is it, uh, what we can do is make sure that uh everyone receives a hard copy. And if everyone gets that tomorrow, can we schedule a meeting for five PM on Thursday?
Sounds good.
Is there anyone that would not be able to do a five PM meeting Thursday? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
None.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, wait one second, I heard one voice, and I think that was Mr. Sabo.
Mr. Dr. Musalem, go ahead.
That's okay, there's several hands up, but I'm gonna be, I, I am not gonna be available. But I do not wanna stop this due to my unavailability, so I don't have an issue with Mrs. Morgan and Dr. Lazar. You know, taking my place in those, in, in that meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And can we make sure Mr. Jacobs is available, please? Sorry.
Yes, any and all that need to be in attendance to the meeting on Thursday at five. Uh, please, uh, Penny, uh, make sure that they are, you know, available, and I think right now it would just be, uh, Scott. Okay, now, I understand that there were hands that were up. So with that, Madam Secretary, uh, am I missing anyone?
Um, I was one of the hands, um.
Okay, you have the floor.
First, no, thank you. So I will say that a part of, I had a lot of questions, a lot of them had been answered by, um, other board members, excuse me. Um, one of my things was requesting the line by line, just be, I'm not gonna lie to you, this, this, and the book was I just saw kind of like the same thing repeated at different times throughout, and, and it was like, kinda like what Ms. Barry had said, like I kinda would like to have seen just Crestwood, just Riverside, just Hyde, just each school, and then the numbers all presented as a whole, but even though it appears, it's like each section did have, have the numbers separate, but it just the line by line would have been very helpful, and I, and I am glad that, um, we were able to hear Mr. Jacobs's opinion on this, because I think that his opinion. Um. It definitely.
Is valuable.
We feel more comfortable, yeah, a hundred percent. And, and obviously, I'm glad that you guys were able to iron out some of the concerns and issues that he had, so I think if seeing the line by line, I think had it been provided with this, it probably would have made a little more sense, you know?
Yeah.
But for whatever reason, I mean, I'm not, I get it, I mean, it was a lot of information, but then it was like, here, just look at this section, just look at that. Because it, it was, it was a lot of information, so even the line by line would have been helpful. I'm glad Mr. Jacobs chimed in, and hopefully we can meet on Thursday and, and get the ball rolling, but, um.
Oh.
That's it.
Okay, so with that, I have uh the motion to table from, uh, from Mrs. Kaminsky. Mrs. Barry, will you second that motion to table until Thursday at five PM? I, I'm Mr. Sabo?
I'll second.
Okay, so what we have is, uh, Mrs. Kaminsky, uh, to table this, Mr. Sabo to support it. We will table this until Thursday at five PM.
Mr. President, this is Danielle.
Yes, Mrs. Elzayet.
Just a point of order, the original motion was moved by
Correct.
Mrs. Kaminsky seconded by, uh.
So we need Mrs. Barry.
So the amendment needs to be approved by Ms. Barry.
Yes, I, there, you are correct on that. Mrs. Barry, will you amend, uh, or support the amended motion? Mrs. Barry? Will you amend?
I'm mute. Sorry, support, I've said it five times, I didn't realize that, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Nadia, um, thank you, Mrs. Barry, okay. Now, with that being said, uh, all those in favor signify by standing aye.
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 Okay, the motion carries, I'm sorry, anyone not supporting? Okay, the motion carries. Also, Gwen, if you could, because this is a comment that's been mentioned a couple of times. Uh, is it possible that in your presentation, you could break that down by building? So that it's easy for the members of the board to look at?
Yes, no, absolutely.
Okay. All right, okay, thank you so much. Uh, Gwen, thank you, thank you, and thank you to your staff, um, I believe it was Pete and and I don't know who the other one, or Andre and Ali?
Ali, you're close.
Ed and Ali.
Okay, all right, so I appreciate the thought that you stuck with us as long as you did. Um, and, 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 and providing your presentation, and we will see you in a few days.
Yes, I, I thank you for considering, um, and I wanna make sure that, you know, we've been working with your team since, um, I think it was November of two thousand nineteen, you know?
Yeah.
Trying to develop this and with COVID and things like that. I appreciate, um, you doing your due diligence. This is not anything that we don't expect, and we wanna be as transparent as possible. As, you know, whatever questions you have, um, we are here to answer, there's no, you know, as long as you're comfortable with it. Um, and Scott's comfortable, and that's all we ask for. We want, we want this experience to be good for you. Um, and I will tell you, Jack, uh, Scott, I had him before, well, we got a little closer here. I gave him a bunch of numbers, and I said, call him, call, call the people we're working with. And so he called, and he can talk to that more, because I gave him uh cell phone numbers of facility directors. That, um, we are currently either beginning stages, middle stages, you know, to contact. As well, I would, I would tell you as a board, I can, I can hand over some, um, board presidents and, and things like that, that we are currently working with, um, that you can call them too, because I we've, we have good relationships with, with our customers, as well as, you know, the board members too, so as transparent as, I understand.
Thank you, appreciate that, appreciate that. All right then, uh, with that, uh, we will move on. Uh, Penny, I'm going to, um, turn the business report back over to you for the following, uh, action, action item.
Mr. President, my apologies, I wanna thank the Train team for their support and for being here. Um, please, you could feel free to exit off, uh, know it's nine fifty-one in the evening. So we appreciate your joining of the family. Sorry we couldn't feed you dinner this evening, but thank you for everything.
Thank you, Dr. Musalem.
Yes, thank you, no problem.
Thank you.
You're not any different than any other district, I will tell you, with all those calls that you had and emails. I listen to that all over the state, I hear the same questions, because I sit on board meetings nonstop, so, um, it's pretty common. Good luck.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Musalem, and Penny, now I'll turn it back over to you for the requisition.
No problem, the last two of mine are really simple, I hope. The approval of resolutions, the attached list of re- requisitions, sorry, not resolutions, I apologize. Approval of requisitions, the attached list of requisitions are items that the buildings or departments would like to purchase for their upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes, and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once the requisitions are approved by the, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Mr. Chair?
Madam, uh, or I'm sorry, uh, Mrs. Barry?
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment five A one.
Okay, thank you, do I have support? Uh, Mrs. Elzayet?
Kaminsky.
Uh, Mrs. Kaminsky, Mrs. Kaminsky, okay, also, uh, okay. So we have a, a motion from Mrs. Barry, uh, that the attached list of requisitions, I'm sorry. The Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions as per attachment, um, five A one, uh. Supported from. supported from Mrs. Kaminsky. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any nays? Hearing none? All those in favor? I'm sorry. Motion passes. Uh, also, uh, for the record, Madam Secretary, I noticed here that the item says 4A1. It's, is it 5A1 or 4A1?
Five.
Five, that's what I thought, okay. Okay, the motion passes. Uh, Penny?
Number two, approval of Sunbelt contract. The Crestwood School District has currently been contracting with Sunbelt staffing to provide psychologist services to the district. The previous contract ran through December 31st of 2020 not to exceed $18,000. We currently have not exhausted those funds, however, the contract has expired. The administration would like to extend the contract through the end of the school year. We will continue to search for the school's social work psychologist.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Berry.
I move that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Sunbelt staffing through June 11th, 2021 per the attached agreement, see attached 4A2.
Support.
Uh, is that Mrs. Janune?
Yes.
Okay, I got one right. All right, uh, so we have a motion from Mrs. Berry, supported with Mrs. Janune, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the contract with Sunbelt staffing through June 11th, 2021, per the attached agreement, see attachment 5A2. All those in favor signify by stating aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Passing. I'm sorry, yes, uh, Mr. Sabah.
I wanted to ask a question if possible prior to the vote, but.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, any question, Mr. Sabah, please?
Yes, I guess, uh, Dr. Lazar, maybe this question is for you. Um, is this becoming a common practice with Sunbelt? Um, or is this something that we can handle internally? Or just seems kinda, I think we.
I think this is a second, correct me, Penny, I think this is a second contract we brought for Sunbelt, right? Um, we've, we've actually minimized the number of contracts we have for staffing companies. We've reduced it greatly. Um, the issue we've been running into, and I don't think COVID has helped, is in the area of special ed. So we have been able to manage in general ed. Um, however, in special ed, we need certifications and the postings are still open. Um, there haven't been any applications. Sunbelt themselves has actually been having trouble finding properly certified people because, um, we've run into issues with them acquiring people for us because nobody wants to come in person. Um, you know, we've run into the, I'll do it, but I'll do it virtual only type thing. Um, so they're actually having trouble themselves. So the staffing companies are struggling in these areas as well as districts across the board. Um, and it was one of my goals to get rid of all the contract companies because it's a lot better when you have somebody who's truly vested in the district. Um, so we have reduced the number of contracted employees. Um, but it's these situations where we have legal obligations to IEPs where we need certifications in there to keep us out of that, you know, to ensure that we're in legal compliance with those services.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Are there any other questions for administration regarding the contract? All right, all those then signify by stating aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I hear an objection?
No.
Okay, motion passes. All right. Thank you, Penny.
Thank you.
All right, and now we are moving on to the personnel report. Good evening, Dr. Lazar.
No items.
So I'm going to say good evening, but I have nothing for you today, so I will not.
I know, I know. It's, it's just, it's just that I do recall that it's always good to recognize our, our administration. So I have to make sure that not only do I call on this for the record, but I also recognize you as the person who will bring this forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, yeah. President, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine, you're fine. Uh, moving on, then we do have information from our superintendent. So I'm gonna turn this over for some informational items, Dr. Musallam.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, Board, again, and good evening, community. Um, you know what? I just wanna say, it's nice when I don't have to say much because I've got two team members that know what they're doing. So thank you, Dr. Lazar and Mrs. Morgan. All right, so I got some, uh, quick announcements. Uh, no action items this evening. Uh, we have a couple informational items and just some updates. So first off, we have no retirements or resignations. Um, I do wanna congratulate our snow coming winners from Crestwood. Our snow coming king for 2021 is Senior Mo Sob. And our snow coming queen is our senior Rayan Z, is that Zimi, or Zeni? If I said it wrong, I apologize. You give me later. But congratulations for your snow coming wins. And, uh, God, I wish I could have been there, but, you know, pandemic. Um, yeah. Uh, I wanna, as a reminder, it's on our website, um, as well as the Crestwood Schools website, that there is a, the Southeastern Michigan Community Alliance Virtual College and Career Fair is coming up. So please make sure you register, check it out on the website to all of our seniors and our juniors. Um, and I wanna reiterate, scholarships are happening, they're happening, they're happening. So for scholarships, please reach out to, um, your counselors. There's tons of scholarships. They're on the website. Um, you know, as a former high school principal, I'll tell you, you would think kids are banging down the door to sign up for scholarships. No, it's the other way around. We gotta bang on their door for them to come in and sign up for scholarships. So this is just a reminder to all the parents, please reach out to your children's counselors and, you know, get them to apply for scholarships. There's a lot of them out there. This is the time of year. Athletics, congratulations again to Adam Sabah, who committed to Madonna College for football. Just so everyone knows that we wait for that commitment to be official before we announce it. So congratulations and congratulations to his proud father who's sitting here right now, uh, who I watched.
That's my nephew.
His nephew, sorry, nephew. But I know he treats him like a son because I watched him yell at him a few times. So congratulations. Um, also, congratulations again to Zane Bazey, who committed to Campbell College in, uh, North Carolina for wrestling. And congratulations again to Salaj Alad, who committed to Lawrence Tech for soccer. Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, I wanna tell you something. Mr. Mike Schleyer, AD, we are going to emphasize the importance of scholar athletes and we're gonna push these scholarships. Okay, this is, this is going to be a normal routine for us. I promise you that. Um, as a reminder to families, yes, even though we're still in a pandemic, um, we have Student Count Day, which is this Wednesday, February 10th. Just make sure they log in like they're supposed to log in, let their teachers take their attendance. Make sure you log in. It's not difficult. It's actually 10 times easier now that we're in a pandemic than it was when we weren't in a pandemic. Log in and do your work. But just as a reminder to the parents, it is Count Day. It's a very important day. Um, midwinter break, yep, it's coming around the corner, Monday, February 15th and Tuesday, February 16th. So we have a four-day weekend coming up. Enjoy your midwinter break, stay safe, and please don't congregate. We don't need COVID numbers to go up. Um, and then, as a reminder too, you know, because we've worked very closely with our, with our, uh, our union leadership, we were able to adjust our calendar this year, and we'll remind you as time goes on. But Tuesday, April 5th and Tuesday, May 4th, um, are professional development days where students will have the day off, but teachers will be working on professional development opportunities and activities. You will be reminded prior to, I promise. And finally, because it's 10:01 PM, we had a very long conversation today about the tentative, I wanna reiterate, in bold and in italics, tentative reintegration plan. We, I wanna guarantee everyone that we hear you and we're listening to you. Please understand that if we don't do what you're asking us to do, it's not because we're not hearing you or listening to you. We are trying to look at a plan that works for all students in the best capacity. Just a couple quick things, real quick. Um, all students will go to school five days a week. If you choose hybrid, you will be scheduled for specific days. And the days you're not scheduled to go into the classroom, you will be on online learning. This is all tentative. The board, as well as all of us, heard all of your feedback today. What I wanna say quickly is you're going to receive a survey electronically on Wednesday. You will also receive a survey through postal mail. On the survey you receive through the postal mail, we'll say on it, if you completed the online survey, you do not need to complete the postal mailed survey. There will be a deadline date on that survey. Please fill out those surveys because it'll help us help you. And I will be honest with you, you don't fill them out, we're gonna haunt you. People will be knocking on your door. I don't think you wanna see me knocking on your door at 8:00 AM with my Crestwood mask saying, fill out the survey. Trying to bring light to all of this because it's been a long day. I appreciate everyone. I thank everyone. God bless all of you. Mr. Chair, that was all my quick updates.
Dr. Musallam, thank you very much. Greatly appreciate what it is that you do. And again, we, uh, as a board, uh, know that how important it is to work as a team. With that, I'd like to talk, call on Mr. Green.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Green, do we have, uh, any public comments?
You know, I, I wasn't paying attention to that. I thought we were done with comments. Let's just take a quick look.
Okay.
Sorry, I was unprepared.
Nope, you're fine, you're fine.
Um, it was probably, let's see. All right, let's see what we have here. Um, I, I think we've, I think we've seen, uh, we've seen the answers to these already, so I think we're good.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I'm going to open the floor, uh, to members of the Board of Education, if they have any questions or comments, uh, for our administrators.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so I'll call, um, will that Mrs. Elgaiat?
Berry?
Nadia, I'm sorry. Please forgive me. All of you, please forgive me. I can't, I can't see you.
You're doing great, Mr. Green.
Go ahead, Nadia. I'll, I'll call on Nadia first. I know how many.
Okay, I just wanted to reiterate what Dr. Musallam said about Count Day, how imperative it is, um, this, that is tied to our funding. Um, if children don't log on, we don't get our funding. Um, you know, the teachers are putting the effort with the child, so please do what you can to make sure that the children do log on that day. My other thing, um, last month when, um, uh, Hillcrest had the students do that video, uh, thanking the school board for, um, Board Appreciation Month, I had to tell, I have to tell you, it brought tears to my eyes. It made me, uh, thankful for what I do, and I really, really did appreciate that. That was very, very thoughtful. Uh, and to Ms. Marveso and the staff at Kenlock for their thoughtfulness, uh, and taking care of me for Board Appreciation Month. I can't thank you enough for your thoughtfulness. And thank you to my colleagues, um, for everything that you do. Thank you.
You're very welcome. With that, I'll call on, uh, Mrs. Fuad. Uh, you have any question?
Thank you, I'm, I'm here. It's just been late, I think. Um, I just wanna thank everyone, um, for all their questions. I'm glad everybody got to air and get everything off their chest today. Uh, hopefully that helped, uh, the parents. Um, I'd also like to thank the, uh, staff for, uh, Board Appreciation and Alice for all the, uh, gifts, uh, totally unnecessary, but appreciate. Um, and Nasreen also. So, uh, thank you, and I hope everybody has a good, good night today.
Thank you very much. Um, Mrs. Elgaiat, any questions or comments?
Um, I just also wanted to say thank you so much to, um, Hillcrest. I, I love the basket. Hannah, thanks for tracking me down. Um, I appreciate everybody working so hard and so late. So with that, I'll say good, uh, good night, so I don't keep you guys on it longer.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mr. Sabah?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate a couple things about, um, you know, this is very serious to all of us, especially with the reintegration. All the comments were taken to heart. Uh, thank you to everyone who did comment and asked questions. You know, I really wanna thank the teachers, uh, because I know this is really hard on them too. Um, you know, at the end of the day, we, we need to do what's best for everybody involved, but I did wanna thank everybody, and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Mrs. Kaminsky?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to thank everybody for the board appreciation gifts and comments and the video. Um, it certainly helps us when we're feeling down and like we just can't win. It makes us realize why we're here, and we're here because we care. Um, so thank you. And then, um, just good night, everybody. I appreciate everything everyone does. And I can't wait till February 21st when we can see each other again in person.
Absolutely, thank you. And last, but not least, um, Mrs. Janune, our secretary.
That's okay. You, you don't wanna hear me say anything else. Thanks, guys.
You got it.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you guys do. I'll be the shortest message this evening. Good night, everyone.
You got it. Thank you, thank you. Um, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, thank you very much. Um, all of you have said kind words to our administration and to the supporting staff that help in, in, uh, running our district. But most importantly, thank you for each and every one of you for thanking the community, for being and taking an active role with this, uh, tentative reintegration of our schools. Uh, I think everyone here said it to, uh, and I think, Sue, you've mentioned it best, we've said it to nauseam, uh, that what we need to do is make sure that we do this cautiously, but most importantly, it's for our kids. And, uh, all of the things, as Mr. Sabah said, have been taken to heart. And I know that we will move, um, quickly and cautiously for Crestwood's, Crestwood School District. Most importantly, so that Crestwood is the shining light for others, uh, to emulate. So with that, uh, I have nothing else other than thanks, thanks, and many more thanks. Uh, hopefully I will be back on the road and out of this snowstorm and back in Michigan. So until then, I will take a motion for adjournment.
Support.
So I have, I have support for, I'm sorry, Mrs. Berry, yeah, here we go now.
I went opposite. I just wanna get done. What time is it? Past my bedtime.
Yeah, and, and who was, who was my support?
Uh, Kaminsky moved, I supported.
Okay, so Mrs. Kaminsky moved and then supported. All right, ladies and gentlemen, so I will bid you farewell at 8:10. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
10:10, aye.
10:10 now. All right, ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening and thank you.
Have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.